Mayatee, other indigenous people from rural Canada. And other people from rural Canada and actually the world and all of that makes Anubik a great place to live. With that, item number two, we'll move to the adoption of the agenda. Move by. Officer McDonald, second by Councilor Gillis. Any further additions, changes, deletions on the agenda? Okay, all those in favor? Okay. Item number three, declaration of a conflict of interest or pecuniary interest with any of the agendas. Nothing declared, so we are good to go. Delegation presentations and petitions. Uh, on Monday night, we did have the presentation from the Shell Lake residents about the traffic concern. So, uh, we have anything on that because we.
That is correct. Based on your feedback on Monday, we have added it to the. Eight, eight point five install three ways not a show, so it is on our agenda tonight.
Right? Uh, we didn't have a presentation, but we do have the monthly RCFP report. They're just switching off to staff sergeants and the new staff sergeant Chris. Why not is not as nice yet, but Jesse Auburn has moved to Bravo, so. I would expect next month, uh, Chris will be in town and will be able to, uh, begin. His job as staff sergeant and presenting. Um, the RCFP report, taking any of our questions, the, uh. RCFP do a great job on this report. It's very informative. And they've also been, uh, great community partners as far as. Getting together and sharing information and working on issues that are important to the community, so. Uh, we're sure that Chris will, uh, continue with that. He's been. In the Delta for a while and Anubik up to talk for a few years and now back to Anubik, so. Looking forward to, uh, hearing from him. Uh, public question period, number five. No questions from the public? All right, adoption of the minutes. This is eight minutes held on the seventh and, uh, ninth of July meeting in council chambers. Move by. Also Barrett, second by, also Dave. Any further corrections, changes needed on the minutes? All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion. Thanks, Councilor Merrill. I see you're, you're on now. You got in?
I got in, thank you.
Okay, action items. Minutes, we went through these on Monday night. Any further questions on any of the action items seven one? Yeah, we're good on that. Eight, one, increase bingo jackpot for the Anubik curling club. Increasing the jackpot car price to a hundred thousand dollars and, uh. Setting jackpot cards, so. Get this onto the table, move by. Council Raymond, second by. Council McDonald. Any further discussion on the jackpot increase? Alright. These are questions we'll all answer on Monday. All those in favor?
Yeah.
Land boundary amendments, lot sixteen, block fifty, plan twenty-one seventy-two, seventy-eight, blue plate. Um.
We both. Oh, I don't know.
Oh.
No, uh, uh. It was just a point of order to confirm that there were four that voted for any previous item.
Yeah.
Because I know that there were some voting against.
Yeah, okay. Should we support that, so? Those. Against the motion. Sorry, okay. Before order two. Yeah, sorry, when I saw that we had, um, majority, so.
I just, I wasn't sure about that.
Good, good record. Okay, um. On this amendment, just before we make the motion, are we making the motion on? Uh, A or B? Or one or two? Or? Does need to. Did need clarify which? Uh, expansion of that locker block we're making motion on?
That is up to you to decide. The recommendation is for either one or two, but there is no recommendation which you would think.
Counselor Man.
Either way, we vote on it, one or two, one's bigger, one's small, we page more, right?
Yeah, so. Okay. Okay, let's get it on the table then and then say, okay. Motion move by. Council Raymond, second by Council McDonald. Further discussion on the motion. We want to give any direction to the zoning for our, um.
Also, as we discussed, either one or two depends on what he wants to pay and we set for a rate, correct? And at the same time. It's a dead end street and there's nothing being developed, are you correct?
Yes.
No other lots are being sold.
Alright. Okay, just clarifying that.
Even the property wouldn't allow for. Any signal being developed in there. That's because of the hill and the slope and stuff, so you don't want to.
I just wanted to clear on the one or two, it don't matter, it depends on the rate, right?
Okay, so we'll, we'll give the development officer direction to clerk of landowner. For what would be reasonable on that lot. Okay? Not that that's part of the motion, but that'll be the direction. We're just, we're just approving that he can expand the lot. With, within the parameters that we were given. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Hold, sorry, Peter.
Just to clarify, are we, is council voting on the blue or the red option?
Okay. That was my question. We just had that discussion. And. Counselor Raymond said. We're, we're voting on an expansion of the lot. And we'll allow you to work with the landowner to see what works out best in that area. I mean, if it ended up being. On option two, the greener area. Council is fine with that. If it was somewhere in between the red and the green. We're fine with that. We'll, uh, rely on your professional judgment and, uh, discussion with the landlord.
Okay, understood. Just wanted to be a hundred percent clear on that. Thank you.
That's why we're paying you the big money.
So do you want to read that, um? I would take, so that's how do you, how it'd probably be up to and not exceeding option B. Option two. If, if you go high, like the option two, which is the bigger one, yeah, then you said almost up to but not exceeding, so. Up to.
Up to, sure, why don't we say up to the size of option three? Okay. So, so the motion that would have been made, it's, it is all that Anubik Town Council hereby approves. Expansion of lot sixteen, lot fifty, plan twenty-one seventy-two, seventy-eight, who may grow up to option two. And the government, government of the Northwest Territory may work with landlord towards expansion of the lot with the support of the town. Okay? Alright. And. We have. Everyone in favor of that? We don't need, uh, anyone. Okay. Item eight, three is request for council decision. Twenty twenty-five dash zero six five, update the filming and photography policy FM point zero zero six. Get this on the table, move by. Counselor Gillis, second by. Counselor Raymond. Any further discussion on this? Everyone's, all the questions grassed around Monday? Alright, all those in favor?
Yes.
Motion carried. Eight, four. Request for council decision, twenty twenty-five dash zero six seven. Uh, I believe this is the new mobile food vendor policy. FP dot zero one one.
Once it's on the table, it can change the changes.
Okay. Move by. Counselor Bear, second by. Counselor Gillis. Cindy, you wanna just discuss the changes that we made Monday so that everybody understands what's.
The only change that we made was based on Counselor, uh, Mero's. Question with regard to, uh, electrical cords and that type of thing. So if you look on the. Last portion under operating conditions, electrical cord safety. All electrical cords must be positioned and secured in a manner that prevents tripping hazards to the public staff or other vendors. Cords crossing pedestrian areas must be covered with approved cord protectors or ramps. Use of power supplied by host location, if the mobile food vendor intends to use. Power supplied by the property or event location they are operating in, the vendor must obtain written consent from the property owner or event organizer prior to connecting the power source. And those are the only changes that we made.
Any further questions, comments on the mobile food vendor policy? Okay. All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion carried. Eight, five, request for council decision, install three-way stop sign on Shell Lake Road. Get this onto the table, move by. Council McDonald, second by Council Barrett. Any further discussion on this? Any further information, Cindy?
Uh, no, other than we have just taken what was, uh, recommended by the public petition. And we just worked it into a request for council decision where you were just simply telling us put a three-way stop there. So, once you make that motion, we will work with infrastructure to do a couple of things. One, get the three-way stops. And, uh, do some brushing around that area, so the stop signs are visible. And, uh, any other work that needs to be done as a result of their aggression.
With the new stop signs, are there specific requirements or, uh, public information or?
Yes, that would be part of the process a little bit, um, and it's more, it's. We wouldn't need a public security for it, what we need to do is warn people that there is a new stop sign coming up. So it's more of a public education rather than a public comment.
Okay. Yeah. That'll sort out, Councilor, I'm here. Do better vote on this. All those in favor?
Yeah.
Alright, motion carried. Eight, six, request for council decision. Okay, tender award for Jim Flea Park washroom in possession. And I believe. Yeah.
So if you get it on the table.
Yeah. Trying to determine which motion we're getting on the table. Yes, there are two, um. So. The discussion we had on Monday was to send it back to the. Public Works Committee for further discussion and deciding what we needed. And so there's. Two motions, so. We'll leave it to the council, making the motion, which motion that they want to make, because there's two options here.
So the first option is to award the contract at. One point five million. The second.
One point one.
And the second motion would be to. Diverge back to. Administration.
Just for everyone's, uh, the budget for this was.
Six seventy-five.
Which?
Six seven.
Six seventy-five. Yeah. But if we. Counselor Raymond.
Let me motion and defer it back, better numbers.
Option two, uh, motion refer back to the public boards committee, so defeating the motion and we, or. Defeating the tender and referring it back to, uh, public works committee for their decisions. Counselor Raymond.
Reason being is because well, it's over budget for one, but also it's, this bill, we're gonna need these buildings reused for four months, a year, not year round. It looks like we have. Year round numbers. So that's why I'm referring it back to, yeah, see if we can get, uh, they're only gonna be used for in the summertime, maybe. So I can't see them being used in the winter, so that's something.
Okay. Move by Council Raymond, second by Council Barrett. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion carried. You've got the motion, Chandler. Yeah, good. Bylaw, so that's, it's six nine one bylaws. Bylaw. Uh, request for council decision for twenty twenty-five dash zero five nine, bylaw fifty-seven, fifty-two, community plan. And we had a discussion on this and now.
It's well above my signature line.
Right.
Motion that we are going down.
Just for clarification, the motion that we are now passing, uh, based on discussion on Monday. It resolved that Anubik Council, Town Council hereby refers the community plan back to administration to incorporate. Incorporate changes resulting in the public consultation. So that would mean it would come back to council for our September tenth meeting. And that gives everybody an additional month, but also allows, uh, administration to incorporate the changes that have been suggested. Okay, so that's what the motion is that you're gonna be getting, so move by. Officer McDonald, second by. Sorry, second by, Council Raymond. Questions, comments, Peter, did you? Will someone? Oh, sorry, Peter.
I, I would, I would just suggest instead of resulting. I think it was, it was resulting from public consultation, so we received a lot of. Written and verbal, real written comments saying, could you change this, could you change that? Some of them came quite close to Monday, so we're giving ourselves more time to review that, so I'd say resulting from consultation, so consulting resulting. I think you said resulting to. Just some grammatical change.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we could certainly do that, and it's certainly important we take the time to get all of. The comments considerations, because it is a ten-year plan, so we want to make sure that as we're developing, that we get it right. All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion carried. And nine, two is, uh, the sister motion with the community plan, which is on the zoning bylaws. So request for council decision, twenty twenty-five dash sixty, bylaw twenty-seven fifty-three, zoning bylaw. And it will also follow suit. Yeah, with a similar motion that's just above, uh. Signature line, it resolved that Anubik Town Council hereby refers the zoning bylaw back to administration to. Incorporate changes resulting from the public consultation. Move by. Council Day, second by Council Raymond. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion carried. Nine, three, request for council decision, twenty twenty-five dash zero sixty-one, bylaw twenty-seven fifty-six. Amen road naming. So, this. Good. So this, this hasn't changed from Monday, right?
Yeah.
Okay, just. Just clarifying that, because we did have discussion on this, so. Let's get this onto the table and then we'll have discuss, have a discussion on. What we want to do in regards to that, because I know there was some other discussion taking place after the heated on that, so. Move by. Council Raymond, second by Council McDonald. Questions, comments on the name changing bylaw? Counselor Raymond.
So. It made sense to make it all Shell Lake Road. Obviously, right? Um, and then there was discussion of Don Cave, that's a member of Anubik, since it started. And then the discussion came up that maybe we could change the park where he actually lived.
Yeah.
Into the Don Cave Park, because he actually lived right there too close. Choo choo Park, which has no real name.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know what consultations we gotta go through, uh, or what we're gonna do, but. We could. Maybe do that swap, that seems to be fairly respectable and exchangeable.
Yeah.
As long as it doesn't take two years.
Yeah.
So I don't know what's everyone's thoughts on it, but it seems to be. We change a one road into the full name. Which makes sense. And. Respect the man that. Full names part three was.
Yep. That makes sense.
Uh, I can explain that process.
Hey Cindy, give us a little more explanation there.
So if you. Choose to do that and are going to suggest that we rename the park, it would be a similar process, a, a naming facility, so it would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it would go back to the naming committee. To make that recommendation, so just like as if you were a member of the public, you want to change the name of something, you would make an application. So if you're directing us to do that, we would, administration would make that application on the town council's behalf. It would go to the naming committee, the name, naming committee would make the recommendation back to council, then it would come back. Just like tonight, for our council decision to rename, or rename the park. That's kind of the process that it did. So it wouldn't take two years.
No, and I think that would certainly be better recognition, with, as we've all seen, a lot of us didn't even. Know the road was named that, and we certainly couldn't see the sign. So I think it would, it would be better recognition of all the work that's gone with them, and. I had no idea it was on the fire department for a hundred years. I knew it was on council, I knew it was definitely mayor, but, yeah, it played that huge role, for sure. Yeah. Okay? So, just for clarification, that entire road on Shell Lake will be renamed Shell Lake Road. And then we will look at a submission for. Uh, naming the, uh, Don Cave Park, uh, but it will go through the naming. Okay?
And for Janet Double Road, all the way to the highway.
Yes.
Yeah.
And including the one shooting out, like, yes. Everything is considered Shell Lake Road, yeah.
Yeah. This stop sign will be in, well, middle of that road.
Yeah, the three-way stop sign, yes.
Alright, any further discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion carried. Nine, four, amendment to the highway traffic bylaw. Request for decision, twenty twenty-five dash zero six six, bylaw twenty-seven fifty-five, amendment highway traffic bylaw. Um, and. This will include regulations for the mobile food vendors. Let's get it on the table and we're gonna have that discussion, move by Council Barrett, second by Council Raymond. Wanna just.
So what we would be adding or amending the highway traffic bylaw is to have the definition of the mobile food vendor. In there, because it doesn't have that now. So we would be adding the definition as a mobile food vendor. And then some, uh, conditions for special events. Uh, requiring written authorization for special events, uh, for them to only operate in designated areas. Uh, ensuring that they're not obstructing traffic, uh, vehicle or pedestrian traffic, that they're not, um. Contrary, they're not parked contrary to any of the other traffic regulations. Uh. And, uh, any fines if they are parked in the wrong spot or refused to. So those are. The, um. Additions to the highway traffic bylaw to allow the policy and the food vendors or the mobile food vendors to.
Okay. Just clarification also, this is first and, and second reading. Both people made the motion, be for the first reading and also for the second. Okay, any further questions, comments? All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion. Motion's carried, all first and for Senator. Okay. Bylaw. Request for council decision, twenty twenty-five dash zero six four, bylaw. Twenty-seven fifty-four, amend the business license bylaw. So this again is for the mobile food vendors, get it on the table, then have the discussion, move by. Council McDonald, second by Council Barrett. And it's pretty much the same as Cindy said, we just have to include that into, uh, this bylaw also. Any further questions, comments? All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion carried. Good. Uh, item nine, six. Is. Request for council decision, twenty twenty-five dash zero six eight, bylaw twenty-seven fifty-seven. Amen zoning bylaw twenty-five eighty-three slash P plus D slash fifteen. And we had extensive discussion on this, so if we can get. This onto the table, then we can have, ask any other further questions, move by. Council McDonald, second by. Council Gillis. I mean, before we do that. Apologize to some people yesterday, or yesterday on Monday, uh, but. It didn't allow the people who are joining us virtually. Uh, Matthew, I think most people know you're from the previous meetings, but if you could just introduce yourself and, and your role. Just in case some of the counselors weren't at the previous meeting and then. I think the only other person we have that I can see is E, but Matthew, you can go first.
Sure, thanks, Merrick Clarkson. Uh, hello, counselors, Matthew George with Totem Builders. I'm the lead project manager on the Neetot, Tiny Home Village, uh, been on it, uh, with the Neetot for. I think over two years, almost three years now. A member of Big Island First Nation from Ontario, uh, but I'm based in B C, uh, did a few projects. For housing projects up there, well, twenty of them, and I, I were working on the Neetot Tiny Home Village. Uh, it's been an honor to work on it, it's a. Building again for women and children fleeing violence, uh, nice big central building there in the middle of site. And then sort of a courtyard area with a playground. And then the tiny homes, as we've all reviewed on the last, uh, few submissions. And again, thanks to the previous administration and this administration, we've. Uh, been able to do a sort of pay, phased permit process, so it's allowed us to do. Some of the work required by the funder, um, has allowed us to start some of the earthworks. This week, as well as commit funds to, to build the actual units out in Barhead, Alberta. Uh, so thanks for that and helping us to, to move, um, efficiently in that respect, uh, yeah. Uh, happy to answer any questions, and if we're doing intros, I'll let Dean and then. Uh, Eric, our co-consultant, introduce themselves quickly.
Okay, thanks, Matthew. Eric, you wanna introduce yourself?
Hello, my name is, uh, Eric Merle, uh, thank you to the. Uh, mayor and counselors, uh, for, uh, hearing us, um, I am just, as, uh, Matthew mentioned, I'm with the co-consultant camp for engineering. And so we're just, uh. Discussing the, uh, code compliance and, uh, accessibility requirements, coordinating those with the project. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Dean, you wanna introduce yourself?
Yeah, hey guys, uh, Dean Smith here, some of you know me, Dean Smith Junior. Born and raised here in Anubik, I'm now, uh, site superintendent for the Totem Builders. So I'm more of their boots-on-the-ground support for Totem and the Tiny Home Village.
Great, thanks, Dean. There's, oh. We got someone new. We got someone new there. Patrick, you want to introduce yourself? I think you just joined, Patrick, yeah, go ahead.
Yes, sorry, I'm late. Um, my name, uh, my English name is Patrick Stewart. Uh, I am, uh, Samoyga Sabak, Red Terry Chief, uh, of the Niskanation in Northern B C. I'm a registered architect. Uh, this is my thirtieth year practicing and, um. Yeah, I've known Matthew for a few years and. Uh, it's, uh, been a very interesting project and I'm glad to be here.
Great. Thank you. We've got everybody now, Matthew?
Yeah.
Okay, great. And again, I apologize for not, um. Allowing you to introduce yourself on Monday. We got right into the, uh, agenda item and, uh, I forgot about that, but thanks for doing that tonight. Okay. Yeah, so we will let Cindy's got a bit of an update because we did discover a few things since Monday. So Cindy's going to give the update and then we'll get into any, any further questions and comments. And we also have. Kelly McLeod here, president from the E T Act, which, and who can also, uh, address any of the questions, thoughts that we have. So Cindy.
Thank you. So I just wanted to provide a brief summary for everybody so they understand what they are voting on tonight because it is a very complex, uh. Development that has multiple stages, but. Some lawful considerations. So what we're trying to do tonight is to facilitate. The final phase of that project, which is to include tiny homes. That comes with a zoning by law amendment. And the reason why we have to amend the zoning by law before we can allow the development to continue is. That our existing zoning by law does not have a definition of what a tiny home is. So tonight, what you're going to be voting on is to add a definition of the tiny home, tiny home village. There's three things they are going to be amending the by law for. The first one is the regulations itself, which is, um, you know, the specific land use regulations to include the definition of what a tiny home is. And some of the regulations like how big, how much of the lot they can use, and that will be included in the zoning by law. The next thing that is going to be amended to that zoning by law is the definition of a tiny home under the definition section of that by law. And the third thing that is going to occur in this amendment is to add. Tiny homes as a conditional use, something that is a discretionary use for a. C one, which is currently what that area is zoned for. So in order to do anything else, we need to have that definition of a tiny home so you can then approve the conditional use. So tonight, what you are voting on is the amendment to the zoning by law to include tiny homes. Now, having said that. If you are going to take this third reading, uh, and enact this, there's two other things that we need to consider. The first one is. Does it have an impact on the community plan? It does not because the community plan, it's the regulations in the zoning by law that we have to add the definitions to. Um, the wording in the community plan supports. So we do not have to change the community plan. So what we are only having to do is change the zoning by law. Because we don't have to change the community plan, this does not need to go to ministerial approval. So all it is going to take is first reading tonight. We have to do a public consultation and public hearing. And then at the next council meeting, we finish that public hearing and then we do second and third reading. Okay, so that's kind of how, how it's wanted to go. We don't need ministerial approval to do this.
That's on September 10.
Yes, so to go through what the timelines would be is based on our, the, the City, Towns and Villages Act. And our zoning by law in terms of how we make amendments, we have to do first reading tonight. And then we have to do a public consultation period as well as a public here. That is a minimum of two weeks that we have to do that. So the next scheduled council meeting is September tenth. Within that time from tonight and September tenth, we would then do public consultation, contact all of the adjacent homeowners because of, or. Property owners because it impacts them. And then we do, uh, public hearing and make any amendments. So by September tenth, if there is no significant opposition to this. You would then do second and third read. And then this could be enacted. On September tenth. Once that is enacted, that will allow us to do a couple of other things that only requires a single council motion. The first one be to do the conditional use to allow the tiny home village in the. C one zone. Then to include a modular construction. Because it's not going to be stick built, it's going to be modular, which is similar to what already was happening up at the G T C. So we have to make a conditional use for that. Then we need to do a couple of variances. One is for the side and rear yard. Uh, it'll be, the way that it's developed right now will be closer to the property lines. So you have to do a variance for those two. And then there is also a variance for parking. Now, having said that, the parking variance is already anticipated and, uh, the Neetat have actually gotten permission from the G N W T. To use their lower Happy Valley property. For their property. So some of this is already in play. So in order to do any of those four conditional uses or variances, we just need to get the definition of the tiny home into the by law. So it's complicated, yes, but we pretty much got it laid out. So tonight, first reading for this. We do the public consultation and hearing, September tenth, we finish the hearing, we do second and third reading. And then at that September tenth meeting, all of those other conditional uses, all of that paperwork is going to be there. So once you. Do third reading for the by law, we will then have all four of those motions for you to make a motion with. So by September tenth. Not only will this be changed, but the conditional uses will be, or the conditions will be met. And then the development officer can issue the development permit September eleventh. And then there will be a fourteen day appeal process, of course, and they can continue the work to put the tiny home spin there. In the interim, they are already doing, they already have permission to do earthworks and the big larger central building. So this is just tying everything up by September.
Great, thank you, Cindy. Any questions on the process? President McLeod.
If you guys allow me, I just want to say a few words.
Sure, you want to make your few comments on it?
I'll see. I'll be brief. Just bring it on the hand notes this time.
Hit the right one button there. Yeah.
Perfect. Musty, um, appreciate, you know, allowing me to talk, you know, I know it's not standard process for this stuff, but, um. You know, this has been a long road and we're thankful that today we've arrived at where we wanted to arrive at a year ago. With some of this stuff and, um. You know, our council is very passionate about this project. Um, as you know, the community needs this and more. I don't think there's a person whose room that's not directly or indirectly affected by some of the things that we're trying to combat here with our facility. We've always believed the intent of the plan and the zoning by law was there for us to have the result that we have today. And we're thankful that we're there now. Um, you know, we have shelters, we have transitional homes already operating in some of the zoning that exists today. Um, so we're thankful that, you know, your team has done that and we appreciate everything and, um. I guess what I'm here to say is that. We don't mean to be, um. Conflicting or anything like that with everything that's going on in the community. But we are here to try to push this forward and not blend the two things together. Um, we want to move forward with the town on other files and, um, you know, I want you folks to hear that from me, not, not, um. I'm not a big fan of letter writing, but at the same time, um, you know, I have a job to do, protect our rights as E T Act, which in it. Um, I'm, I'm going to do that, right? And, um. I guess what I'm really trying to say is just to appreciate, you know, the steps you guys have taken to get us to where you are right now.
Yeah.
So I see.
Thanks, President McLeod, and we appreciate that. And certainly this council and the community have been supportive of the tiny village and. As you said, you've got your job and we also have our job and we're also not. Fans of letter writing and the amount of time that it takes and the negative energy. But we do have to represent the community and we'll, we'll continue to do that and. But we've always said that we want to work with everybody in the community and I, I think done a good job on that, uh. In, in recent history, uh, this council has only been here since November, but we've worked with the community and been very successful on getting into where it works, uh. Uh, operational and, and up and working and employing more people and, uh, and supporting each other. We've written support letters for the various. Other indigenous governments in Anuvik and, and we'll continue to work with people and, and we would also welcome the opportunity to work with the E T Act council. We have worked with tribal council on a few things, so we'll continue to do that because I think this truly, this council. Truly wants to make Anuvik a great place to live. The other day I didn't add up in my head, this council has three hundred and forty years. Of Anuvik experience, given that how many people were born here and how many people have been here as long as they have. And I think everyone's quite dedicated to that. And they do a great job on this council. So we're, we're certainly willing to work with whoever we can. I see.
You want to pull it out here?
Oh, you don't need to reply. It's enough. Uh, Matthew, I just wanted to clarify that. So you had asked at the previous meeting whether we could hurry that up a bit. By finding out today, we don't have to change the community plan, that we now push that up to this September tenth meeting. We don't have to wait till the end of September. So. Just wanted to make sure you understood that process.
Hey, perfect. That's good. That's good news.
Great.
Mr. Clarkson, can I just add to that? Would there be an appetite, just a quick, would there be an appetite from the council to, if we could get all our ducks in or meet before September tenth? Um, or a commitment, you know, is everybody traveling or?
That we would have to, we would have to, Gemma's job is to canvass the council on that. I know, um.
The, the second meeting in August was canceled.
Yeah.
And, and I think some of the counselors in front of the travel around that.
We typically don't meet in the second week of August because. People are traveling and families and school, getting ready for school. So. We would have to. Yeah, we, we'd have to check and see whether people were available because council dates are set. You know, for the entire year and people plan around that. So we can make sure we have form because. Uh, we need, in order to make any decisions. So we can check with, um. The council, we're checking with Gemma, but it would, would have to be something in early September and not August. So we can check and see, but I, and then we can let you know.
Yeah, just based on your two weeks. Yeah, just based on that, the next, the next possible time, considering we also have to get things into newspapers and stuff. Would be like the very end of that last week of August. Or the first week of September.
Yeah, it would have to be the first.
Yeah, so it would be really a week's difference in that.
Anyway, we can canvass and, and see whether people are around or available. Okay. Uh, we don't have departmental updates. We had some information.
Need to make the motion so that actually.
Oh, we were supposed on that.
So do you have the first reading?
Probably better vote on that or remote cut for the meeting. So we made the motion, right?
Yes.
Yes. Uh. Now I'm just asking, all those in favor of the amendment to the zoning by law?
Yes.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Uh, now we don't have departmental updates, information items. We had some good information items. Probably the best information item we had, but when Cindy gave the update that, uh. Anuvik Works has brought us, Patricia Davison now in the hard work she's done, she's brought in over six hundred and seventy five thousand dollars.
Yes, including like multi-year loan, that total is six hundred and sixty eight. Uh, for this year alone is four hundred and fifty one. So, yeah, and it's much to the generosity. That doesn't even count the in-kind donations, but much to the generosity versus ICC. Uh, you know, we just got something from them and something from C I B C. So it's been really good.
Yeah, E C made a contribution for three employees. So the Women's Foundation, all of that. Patricia did a great job on pulling that all together. And now with the people they've just hired, there's six people working, um. In next to new and out of the Anuvik Works and they're, they're doing great work. So. Hudos to Patricia and the crew and.
And our community partners.
Yeah. So we've been great. Items, so that's all the information items and we've covered the other ones on Monday. Item twelve, council concerns, any concerns from any of the council members? So, we're brought up nothing. Seeing none, Alana, you're good, Counselor Merrill.
I'm good. Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, there are no in camera items for this evening unless there's anything else would be to discuss in camera. Seeing none, okay, motions adjourned. Move by Counselor Wayman. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Steph.
Thanks, Peter. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Bye. Thank you. Thank you. Bye-bye.